All right, appreciate everybody being here. We're going to start with our work session, as we always do, with look to the end. Before we do the work session, I'm going to ask my office to move it through.
There I go.
Pull me around, too.
Okay.
All right, y'all all get up, we're going to do this for her, and get a picture by you, but we got a card, we got one. Y'all get that here.
Yes, our dog.
And I would like to add, I appreciate all of the school.
Thank you. Oh, wonderful, glad to hear it. I'd love to hear it. Thank you all very much.
All right, we're going to go to our agenda on the work session. First lady is traveling. Mr. Davis wants to explain that to us.
Yes, the commission bridge all over the night travel, and we have a travel which has our group case of apartment.
Any questions from there? All right, I don't know if you're personal, that's also Miss Canyon.
Because we have a new project for a tag court, we have someone leave us, so this is placing someone who.
Any questions? Um. Emergency transport service. And this is all. This emergency response transport service resolution involved them on the offensive daily kind of mission. Y'all read over there? Did you read over there?
Yeah, I did, I did, I had a couple of questions last week. Mexican, like, right? Arctic?
Yep.
A flame problem, flame accountability.
It's going to be distributed in the same way that we're talking about the program. Outside of this, the various pictures, all the services, it's going to be divided in the same way that it was.
Boardly?
The boardly and the same running areas as. Seem to be mayor, or mayor, he was kind of interested in this, they're going, they're going to take their progression this time, they're not going to. Anyone have any other questions? All right, Captain asked this.
Because this is the. We're in for a, we have a truck from the river bridge, salt waste, and then the salt waste is going to pay the road really different. And we've got, you know, very much about a new destination, we're going to do that for about a thousand, and that's what we're here for.
Those are the biggest out of which, right?
Yes, and the salt waste is going to pay the road for each, um, five thousand.
Who can talk of ways that you can.
They're, they're sure other than this. Instead of buying a new one for sixty thousand, we had to have. We talked about it in the budget. But the, 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 they is worth way more than that, so we're treating fair.
Any other questions from there? All right, we will, our sheriff, South East Alabama, safety grant.
Just a reimbursement that we want to do for our holiday grant, another reimbursement of the time.
Y'all have any questions from there?
What does it include?
These questions are for all of us, is the safety grant for sheriff's department. All right.
Mister, I got a question, we can back you to EMS. On some of these, like, some of these smaller EMS services that have volunteered, can they, if they're going to buy a piece of equipment or something, can we hold there for me? Provide two quarters or whatever that might be?
Yes, I, I am trying to, to ride it out of so that it happens, it's really in a preparation for the year. We're just going to express it in.
And you feel like.
Yes, yes.
We did it on our.
Um, yes, 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 yes.
All right, we're going to go down to number six, Miss Canyon.
This is a jail at the Lord's hands. Um, it's been a pretty dear present on the May thirteen thing, but I did not think that's the correct figure. Uh, so we needed to add another three thousand six hundred seventy-five into the total. Um, because as you see in that, that, that summaries and total, that's what I picked up, that does not include first phase of that, um, of that project. And Elizabeth was the, um. Is it just, Elizabeth, um, there was pairs.
Channing, Channing Wood?
Yeah, but that's, um, that, it's, that's name of the company, I think they were doing the, um. The repairs in the jail, the toilets and everything.
Did you have the full number? Other one, I want you. I believe that, I hope it's cell, cell box, that pan is cell box, or the, the woods and cell box.
The jail repairs parts and labor, I think, I think it was, um, the toilets that, um, we were, y'all, they were buying the parts and also repairing them, and, um.
We're going to try this off the house, in parts, and this is something that I'm excited with. That may be.
So, um, but it was, it was part of getting that job, but I just didn't have the credit.
Any other questions from there?
Because it's probably easier to say than done, that fix, repair. Compliment is, you know, like, probably the structure.
All right, moving on to number seven.
Yes, we put out some local line base rock materials, this is that, you know, problem, we use it to, we dig out basements, the rest of the base, and we also use it on the dirt roads. And, uh, if you have a big type of place, I'm going to work with those guys. Thanks, my first Christ, plus our hall comes, the highlight of portions is how we'll go work. My momma valley, see all the. In fact, that's a very light, very different for us, but it is, it's cheap, it's a little cheaper, but the big thing is we haul three loads in one day, you take one, only get one load on the clear. It's, it's, but it packs really good, it's a really good base here. We have used to be several, the biggest convenience is how close it is. We can be in forever. Four miles, one way.
Any other questions on that? All right, back to you, Matt, traffic signs.
We put out the traffic signs for the southeast regional counties of Alabama, and we only see one vehicle, four of the signs. I do, you know, we have an insurance, we're sure worth it, and there was about twenty percent increase. Uh, so I'm only going to do it, that's due to the price alone, we're only three faces of our sign, say.
We.
Due to that, that shop. We have been in, uh, plank, or all alone.
All right, give one more to him, Matt, for a question.
Uh, panel members requested us to fix the sewer footings that came from the boat, and air, um, it's wiped out again, and there, there's going to be a hundred cent at their cost, we're just guessing. Roughly excavating two thousand loads, laden with equipment, they're going to provide two of you, um, drainage pipes at their cost. Try to abandon us, have a good ladder, so we will install two, two dikes, take the.
Any questions on that? All right, Miss Canyon, you want to talk about the.
Yes, this was briefly improved in the August twelve meeting, um, but now there's been an increase in, um, this project, all of the engineers talked about this, an increase three hundred and twenty dollars, so we need to get, need to.
Well, our major worker, uh, wanted to realize he didn't have liability insurance, so we had to back him on the whole project, so that eventually, we went along to kill ourselves and paying the rent. We saved about two thousand dollars from that, do it that way. And then we took quotes for the labor, and, uh, Campbell, I mean, the lowest quote in twelve thousand labor. So, all that is said, uh, the, the total price of the project did increase by three hundred dollars. So, um, so, uh, but these two quotes that we got, they didn't buy liability insurance, uh, proof.
This is from the building that we're treating.
It's a fifty by seventy-two phone board, um, and I've already got a kid ordered and paid for, and he's got to pick it up and thumbs hand, probably next week.
All right.
Long, long term, Sheriff, what, what do we have on the budget today? We're under fifty, I'm thinking on what pockets, pension cards, thinking for what we have.
Yes, it's, it's good up there, I appreciate that, it's true, the dirt work they did, friends, issues we got up here.
It looks real good out there.
Always, uh, perfect, you can see the all the floor out there, you can probably back there.
No, we built a new access point, we got a covered area out. There's an old block that, y'all need to take. The range is almost three hundred yards now, probably at three hundred yards now, so it's going to look a bit somethingy out there.
We have, I think our last part, I have a lot of confidence, only I'm sure we have some support. Yes. A lot of good confidence. But he, he was on five, for a second, he's come up to.
Bill Stock.
I'm talking about EMS, I know that, me, some of us in private, it's very, uh, about EMS, kind of give us a overview of what the ARPA funding and this to, uh, purple, we're continuing to do for EMS like you say.
Okay, EMS is probably like everything else, costs have went up over the last four, five years, especially since twenty twenty. Uh, so we've adjusted, not just us, probably everyone around, uh, I, I talked to several of our local counties or adjacent counties, everyone has issues as far as EMS. I, I do think that we've been fortunate here, which we were fortunate at Echo as far as the ARPA funds that the commission allowed us to use, uh. Although the, the ARPA funds were used to pay for salaries during those times, for the most part, that's what it was used for. It did allow us to use some of the funds we collected from the runs to improve our, our fleet tremendously. Echo run volume now, we are running about twenty-six hundred calls a year, which is a lot of calls for the, and you look at the map, we're running basically the east half of the county now. With us looking at, um, the future, looking at our station that we've got at Echo, and we also have a station in Pinker that we've had for January nineteenth, we two years. Uh, we're looking at what we can do to maintain and keep that, you know, keep everything going, also you're having to look just like every other department, and now you have to start looking at replacing vehicles, what you can do there. Uh, we have thought outside the box a lot, because as far as from an EMS standpoint, you need transfers, which helps bring in income to pay for these things. So, most, most EMS agencies need an area or need facilities in their areas, well unfortunately, in the county, we just don't have that at Echo, some, some areas do. Uh, we don't have that as far as at Echo, as far as nursing homes, hospitals, uh, dialysis clinics to help with our income near as much as the, the city does. Uh, so, this will help us tremendously as far as continuing, continuing to keep services open. Uh, one of the things that we've been able to do, not that we've been able to do, that we have to do, and I guess we have been able to do it, is when you look at the schools that we cover, the football games, several times, we have to have, Echo will have five and six angles out at one time. Uh, that was not so when we had multiple agencies covering different things, the volunteerism. Uh, in the last few years, as costs went up also, volunteerism has gone down tremendously, not just Bell County, everywhere in the United States, especially in the EMS and volunteer fire service. Uh, you know, from fire side, we've got to look at that in the future, we don't, we don't know the, what the answer is going to be tremendously, but EMS for sure, that, the volunteerism has gone down tremendously. So, we've got staff right now, we've got about ten full-time people and about twenty part-time people, so we've got about thirty employees that we keep going pretty regularly now.
How does, Kenny, and you shared this, uh, talking about, you're talking, how does your day start every morning, I mean, you've been sharing, you've been kind of working, you know, the first couple hours of the day?
Usually the first few hours, uh, we, we got a relationship now, a lot of that is not just me, it's, it's me and some of the others, but I have usually contact for us with, um, relationship with UAB and some of the services that are up there. But what we had to do, there, we cannot, and, and I'm speaking for Echo at that point right now, we can't increase our nine-one-one calls, it is what it is. So, we have data, we know what that's going to be, how many we're going to have, and what the revenue is going to be from that, generally speaking. Uh, what we can do though, is go outside the box and, and find transports, so that's not just easy, that's easier said than done, because that's a lot of relationship with, with other hospitals, with nursing homes. Uh, I've been fortunate, Echo's been fortunate, that we've got a good relationship with UAB and the services up there, that we go nearly, we got one today up there, we went, uh, two angles this week yesterday. Now, while we're doing that, but I get a lot of, I get a lot of people say, I saw your angles in Birmingham, saw it in Mobile, saw it, I saw Echo's angles, not my angles, saw Echo's angles there. We are doing that in order, which is what we told y'all, this commission will do our part to try to find revenue somewhere else, because what you're funding there, or what y'all are putting forward, even though it's a large amount, it's not near what it takes to run an angle service. So, we do appreciate that, but we're having to find several hundred thousand dollars a year at Echo just to keep everything going, so basically, those trucks, like this morning, they're going to transport to a dialysis clinic that's outside of our area. Uh, one going to a nursing home in Hartford this morning that's outside of our area, all of that is based on relationship, getting up every day, finding out what's going on, and sending trucks to get that. We've been fortunate that we could do that, because if we wouldn't have had that this last year, we would not be open right now, that is a fact. Uh, so we've been fortunate, but if you can't slow down and say we can't do that, uh, or that we can stop doing that, because with the, the funding's going to help tremendously. But we got to find more than what y'all are putting in, or what Echo's portion is, we got to find probably twice that much still outside of our area in order to cash flow. And basically, it's not just funding for trucks to go everywhere, it's funding for those nine-one-one trucks to send in Pinker and Echo, and be available when ball game's done, and, and all the events at schools and stuff.
I mean, I don't, I won't share this, because I, I don't think the person has a chance to know exactly what it takes to operate, uh, emergency service.
It's seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, that's not just that, that's every angle service, even if, like, I talked to Ron and them at Erickson, I talked to her several times a week, we work together great, work with Charles and them at Ozark great. It, the average person doesn't understand EMS, and it's not that they don't care, but they, they just don't have to think about it until they need it. That's when they think about it, you know, but it, it's nice to get educated, not in an emergency situation, but it is every day, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, at any time, and usually you can't plan for it. Uh, so unfortunately, it costs money, I do hate that, I mean, we've had one-on-one, I hate it, I mean, obviously, the mission didn't have to put any money forward, but if we want it, that's our only option, you know, if there was a better option, we'd ask anybody, put each of you individually. If there's something we're not doing right, that needs to be done, or something we can do cheaper, hey, let's do it, we're, we're all about it. Echo is still governed by five volunteer board members, so we're doing what we feel like is best, and, uh, we're, we're looking at every avenue and trying to think outside of the box to, to keep it going. Because if you will look close by, some of the counties right around here, they do not have angle service available a lot of times. Uh, Sheriff can talk about some of the counties that he talks with, they say we don't have an angle at all in our county, that is hard to fathom, but that is here in Alabama too, and right around us, there's some counties that are close to that situation.
Some statewide problem.
Yeah.
Then we have two of our large counties that are totally without services.
Yeah.
If you make a run.
Yeah, they're, they're looking, and I think people everywhere is trying to, trying to think outside the box, and I think we're fortunate, and that's not patting us on the back, we, we're thankful that we've been able to do what we've been able to do, the ones of us out there. Uh, but it's, we're not going to act like it's easy, it's every day, it's all day, every day to try to make it cash flow. All right, thank y'all.
Can I ask you one question, could I ask? Is there, uh, I live on Matthews Avenue, and every day of the week of every month, there's several runs, angles down the road, that's just that little part of it. Uh, are most of the calls nowadays, I was curious, is it most, is there more and more young people having to be rescued than in the past?
Uh, and Charles may be able to speak to that, more so out here, because in, in the city, it's not necessarily, it's not necessarily more young, more than older.
It's just the whole.
Generation, I, I would say angles runs have increased, just in general, there are more people using EMS services, wouldn't you agree tremendously?
The, the reason I ask that question is because of, I think that young people be in the highest trucking, you know, more so than anyone else in that.
That's not necessarily, there's, there's a lot of older generation, a lot of doctor's visits, a lot of, uh, just as, I guess as the population is getting older, it's being used a lot more.
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah.
All right, this time it was. We want to call, but I read the meeting, I'm going to ask a bit, careful people give our information. I'm not questioning if I was, or we're just, uh, thank you for saying, like, if you're weather, or we're just, uh, thank you for each step, bless that you stole upon, or bless the Father, thank you for your services, we just, uh, thank you for the grace and mercy that you showed us on the cross. Or we're just asking you to give us the rest, and we're very, and we're just going to give our nation to you, we just pray for you, and, uh, hopefully we can come back together, we just pray that in this meeting, we do our things, that we replace you with your eyes, we're going to, we're just.
I thank you. To the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, infinite.
All right, at this time, I'd like a motion to approve the agenda, approve our, approve our commission meeting minutes from a prior meeting, and approve our number. Second, it's got a motion, the second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. All right, our first item on the agenda, I'd like to ask for approval for the travel test. Motion to approve. And motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. Our next item on the agenda, is the emergency transport services, I'd like a motion to approve that. I'll say. Got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is our capital assets, transfer of beer, we'd like a motion to approve that. Got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. Our next item is the southeast Alabama highway safety grant, Sheriff's Office about to give a motion to approve that. Got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. Moving on to that, our item number six is the jail at the Lord's hands, administrators reporting to us, I'd like a motion to approve that. Got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. Our next item is our, uh, specified local line base rock, the engineers complained to us, I'd like a motion to approve that. Got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. Our next item is the traffic sign being warned, we'd like a motion to approve that. Got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. Our next item on the agenda is word request from town of Erickson, we'd like a motion to approve that, motion to approve. Got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. Our next item is our cattle fund, the state sheriff, Miss Canyon is complaining to us, we'd like a motion to approve that. Got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. We got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. We'll go back to number two, personnel, and Miss Canyon is complaining to us, I'd like a motion to approve that. Got a motion, second, all the flavors, they can say aye, aye, any opposed, motion carries. All right, any report to the staff, that's good.
Well, we, we are doing our paving, uh, they lost the lead last week because the plan was down, but we did finish at any point, under the sixteen, and they're, closer to having to finish before forty-five.
Down, down on sixty-seven this weekend, you know?
Uh, no, sir, they, they're on four forty-five, and it's dogged, it's, that plane, uh, they'll be there the rest of the week, and, and they'll probably go to two one in one day.
They, they planes, with the state.
They've been talking about.
They're together.
They have worked the contract of wire grass, they're supposed to.
They've reached a figure that intersection, I did before, it's going to be like the one in Troy.
Yep.
Front cheek of life.
Yep, they, uh, they serve a lot around, I like, they have a, a leading traffic, that's why there's two, one eighty-four. Place a little while. All right, Sheriff, you got anything?
Been pretty active last five days, I'm staying in the median, so I'm happy to play on my own time, she's there.
Well worth it, very well worth it. All right, Lulu, you got anything?
Looks like the, uh, rand coming back in this weekend, and, uh, we're starting to cool off, look for some highs in seventies, uh, here next week, so it's starting to. Season's starting to change.
This year, you got anything, Lulu?
She started late, she started, but that whole technical, brought on tags, going away, so we're going to do.
Good, all right, Miss Canyon, I know you've got something.
Yeah, I was at a benefit, um, last week, and, you know, since I've been here, um, about seven, eight years now, you all have wanted to, um, benefit benefits for the employees. Um, and there is something I've been, um, thinking about, and I've always hoped that the state would allow us to, in their problem, and that's never happened, so what I did was I reached out to Houston County, who has this program. And one thing is, it's a flexible, um, spending account for both medical and the communicator, and the last private company I worked for, you know, we had it, it's very, very common, is where you put money aside through payroll deductions, it becomes tax-free for, um, expenses for medical or, um, communicator, and it's, it's just a great, you know, benefit to have. Uh, I will be asking, um, if the commission will contemplate, um, incurring that, the costs, which I, I estimate to be around a three thousand dollars a year, um, because we have, they, Houston company used to say, a company that does this for them. I spoke with the ladies that handle that last week, and I never had any issue, um, with this company handling it, so, um, I've been in touch with them, I've gotten their information that would like to, you know, presented, presented to me. And I know, um, me and each year, we were talking about it, and I was kind of explaining to him, you know, what it was, I know for me, when I've had small children, um, it's just a great benefit, um, you know. Um, you know, between daycare and the medical expenses. So you can put so much money aside in these um, these spending accounts, it becomes tax-free, you get a card. And don't quote me on like, you know, size detail, I don't know if this is how, you know, I've dealt with the board. Um, then when you go in for co-pays, you know, your deductibles, you know, things like that, you you just swipe your card, it's almost, you know, like debit card. And the money is taken out, and you um pick how much money you want to contribute to this. I'm just looking for um, for medical, the the max is two thousand five hundred, depending if you have care, is seven thousand five hundred. And um, this, you know, is really a a great benefit, you know, for employees, and I I've been looking at this for some time. Um, you know, I've I've researched it, got a company, and I would like to put it before your consideration of that.
So the the card is linked to one of our nine account?
No, your um, your, the the money is taken out of your paycheck, or the deduction.
Yep.
And then, you know, we turn it over, you know, to the company, it's kind of like this. So, you know, they put the funds, you know, on the card. Um, and so then, you know, we send up, um, every, you know, every paycheck, where, you know, the money is sent to them.
What what was the company name?
This is American Benefit Administrators. And I know they they, I I I don't know if they do other counties, but I've done it, they they've done Houston County.
But they they, if you want to reach funding program, they put much of that up.
Yeah, they set it up, it's just big, like there's a, you know, one time set of three hundred dollars. There's a minimum of, like, say, you know, two hundred fifty dollars, you know. So the charge is um either four fifty or five fifty, some closing per month. So that's the administration fee. And so that's why I will be asking the commission, you know, if they will put that instead of pass that on to the.
That's four dollars fifty percent of our overall fifty dollars.
Right.
With.
Four fifty to five fifty.
You have an offer sent out to the county?
Yes, yes.
Offer sent to Houston County, what was that, say?
No, it didn't have that. But what I found, I was with my last private company I worked for, got a lot of people weren't sure about it at first. And then the next year, we just had like everyone signing that board, because now I'm gonna have to refresh my memory, you know, or look at the latest IRS document. Things like, you know, like eyeglasses, um, you know, the part that you have to pay, um, your your deductibles, your co-pays. I know I was at Costco with my mom this past weekend, and the nasal spray, you know, it had MSA, you know, like that's an MSA. And like what I did, which was, you know, several years ago, um, you would just, you would just swipe your card, it would deduct off the card those things that are eligible. So there's not, now with dependent care, um, when I did it, it was like a reimbursable thing, that you really had to pay, and then it reimbursed, you know, from um, this administrator of it. Um, but it was always very quick, I asked um the ladies at Houston County, I asked, do you have any complaints or any problems, she's like, no. Kind of like the girls crazy, like this is the greatest thing.
Is it a cumulative mistake, sort of?
No, you have to, it's the IRS guidelines, and you have to spend it within a certain timeframe. I know back in the day, when I was actually using one, it was within the county year, I think the IRS guidelines extended it to like another sixty days. You know, for you to spend the money that was in your account, um, but I don't have, you know, all that, you know, the detail. I just wanted to, I'll let you know that I was looking at this and that I was putting it together. Because the um, this agency did say that they would need it by, that it would be for us to start, you know, January first.
Now, what what first time we talked about this one other year, what?
And this is something I've always wanted to do for the employees, just, you know, making sure that it would work, you know, for the employees. Um, but they have a, you know, uh, they've been doing this for, you know, many years, I know Houston, a couple of other counties. Um, like I said, I would always hope that the state, the state employees, they have this. And I would always hope that that would open up for us to be able to use the same people, um, but that never has. I'm always getting the same same people up on every year.
Yeah, I just wondered, um, kind of time we're approved, uh, can pull this here in typically, so so we're pulling this one.
I don't think.
I heard it's strictly.
Yeah, that is strictly like expenses. And so say you choose a thousand dollars for a year, we're going to your, you know, like you hit, I mentioned the tribute. That thousand dollars is split up between twenty six pay areas. It's deducted, it's not taxed, um, you know, we send the money out, you know, to these people, um, and then um, um, you use it for expenses.
Um, if we go with this bag and somebody that 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 actually had our employees in that address.
I did, they don't, they said they don't have on-site, uh, people, but they got a lot of information, they have a portal and everything, I think is what they said. But I will be glad to, um, since I've used it before, and I'll get to speak on the latest, and I'll be glad to come out, you know, to all the, um, you know, employees. And I I think some of our employees, they probably have it with, you know, their spouses or whatever, so I don't think, I don't think a lot of people, they, you know, to- totally do that. You know, they may have it, you know, like especially if they're, you know, married to someone, it's a state employee, or they they already have the access to all this.
Can you withdraw from it, your children are married all the time?
No, it's a, um, and you can look at the IRS guidelines on this, it is a set amount, and for a year, you have to use it, you know, and so you can kind of estimate. Um, you know, how much you want to put into, you want to make sure that you're pretty much gonna have those expenses.
Yeah.
Do you make here?
It's tax-free, I heard that.
To the employee, well, the the employees just don't get taxed on that, and like their basis, you know, uh, five hundred, this is deducted, and then the taxes, you know, you gross, like you pay in federal and all that.
Our next meeting is gonna be on Tuesday, October twenty eighth. I'd like to motion to approve. Thank you, I'd motion to second, all the favor states say aye. Motion carries.